Good evening and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Wednesday, June 25, 2025. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 10th day of June 2025. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During tonight's hearing, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment will be heard by the Board after our attorney, staff, and planning consultants have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members. When the hearing is open for public comment, those wishing to speak should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Our staff will transfer each speaker into the participants' area with the Board, at which point you can activate your camera and unmute yourself. Mr. Muller will then swear you in and ask your name, and we ask that you identify your street name as well, not the number, just the street name. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the Board will be muted. Thank you all for attending tonight and for your interest in the subject at hand. Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Nat, we don't hear you, Nat. Maybe it's your earphones?
I just got it.
Okay, great.
Ms. Capizoli? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mayor Frida?
Here.
Mr. McGowan? Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Perlmutter?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Any announcements from staff or fellow Board members? Not seeing any. Subcommittee reports. I believe we have, well, we had a landscape Subcommittee meeting. Julie is the Chair. She is not attending tonight. David, you want to jump in and give a report on the fly here?
No, could we table it till next time?
Yes, yes. No, I wasn't thinking about the fact that Julie would not be here tonight, and I would have, yeah, tried to plan for that. Sorry about that. Okay, next up, we have a resolution of approval. This is related to Princeton Edens LLC. It was a preliminary and final major site plan related to signage. Princeton Shopping Center 301 North Harrison Street, file number P 2424-506P. Any questions or comments about this? If not, would someone like to move this resolution?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry, who seconded? I didn't see.
I seconded.
Oh, thank you.
Palavy, you were absent that day.
Oh, okay.
That was for the second hearing, just for the wave-finding signage.
I'll second.
Thanks for jumping in with the second, Ms. Nuka. Appreciate that. Seconded by Owen O'Donnell. Call the roll, please. Carrie?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next up, we have a public hearing. Jerry, can you speak to appropriate public notice? I know we have jurisdictions.
Notice and publication are in order, and the Board does have jurisdiction.
Thank you very much. So this is the Master Plan 2025 Fourth Round Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan for the years 2025 through 2035. And we have a presentation that a few of our staff and consultants will give. I just want to kick things off by saying that a whole ton of work went into this plan, and the Board has discussed it. That's not to say people might not have more questions, follow-up questions, et cetera. But we hope to, you know, hear from every member of the public tonight who wishes to speak. I, it looks like we have 32 attendees. In the attendees' room, two people have raised their hands already, but we're, before we hear from the public, we will, we will hear from our staff and professionals, starting with Mr. Muller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, this is a here, a formal public hearing on a Master Plan element, the housing element and fair share plan, which is required by the municipal land use law and an array of statutes and regulations dealing with affordable housing. As the Chair indicated, people be sworn in. There'll be an opportunity by the Board to question them. Any objectors can, who are represented by council and want to cross-examine any other member of the public can do so. This comes, this is part of the long tradition we are now having in New Jersey of affordable housing. I was, people like to say it started in 1975 with the first Mount Laurel case. It really started well before that, and certainly started well before that in Princeton. But it continued with the first Mount Laurel case. I won't get into the details of them. I can, if the Board would like, but I'm not sure that would advance the discussion particularly. But there were a series of cases in '75, second one in '83, which really gave teeth to the 1975 opinion. And then statutory provisions in terms of the Fair Housing Act, creating the Council on Affordable Housing, which has now been disbanded. And most recently, starting in 2024, statutory provisions and regulatory provisions dealing with how a fourth, the obligations for municipalities as to affordable housing, and if they chose to participate in the, what's called the program for determination of affordable housing needs, and there are serious consequences if they don't in terms of being subjected to builders' remedy litigation. The, the Housing Element Fair Share Plan has to be the subject of basically review and discussion by the council, which has to endorse it, and they've played, as opposed to other elements of the House, of the Master Plan, play a more unique role in that because they endorse it, and a lot of the provisions deal with negotiations with developers, they, they have a central role to play in this, and they will be reviewing it for endorsement, I believe it's tomorrow, Justin? Yeah. And then the Planning Board itself, still, as it always has, will be the body that approves it. Now, here's the timeframe, which is of critical importance. The Board has to adopt a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan by June 30, which obviously is just around the corner. If it does not do so, it could be, it loses its immunity from builders' remedy litigation and could be subject to that, which basically is litigation which permits developers to take any sites in the municipality, claim they are suitable for affordable housing, ask for a much higher density than maybe otherwise appropriate, and, and may very well get it. Basically, if there is a builder's remedy, it, that's granted, it's going to wind up providing for high-density housing in the areas of the township that are least suitable for it. So that's to, we emphasize that the Board really needs to adopt a plan by June 30. Can it propose amendments? It can, but if amendments, because the Board always has the power to do that, but having said that, if the Board adopts amendments, and they are substantial, as opposed to typos and just relatively minor clarifications, the, the Housing Element Fair Share Plan would have to be re-noticed, there'd be a new hearing, and we would then be into July, and the town, and the municipality would be vulnerable. If the Board thinks that there are amendments in terms of, well, maybe, maybe some additional sites would be appropriate, they, they can do that. They could propose that. The way to, that I strongly recommend it they be handled is as recommendations that come in a separate document from the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. And during the course of implementation of the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, it may be that the Council and Planning Board will decide, you know, we should review one of those sites further. The flip side of that, though, is not that if the Board does not like a site, they should recommend that it be excised from the program, because there's been negotiations, good-faith negotiations with developers, and I think if that is done, that would precipitate immediate litigation, and the, the municipality would be very vulnerable to that. So that's basically where we stand on that. And I, I could give a lot more detail, but I know Elaine and Justin, that's near Baileywick more than mine. So that's basically what I have to say at this point, although obviously, along with Elaine and Justin, I'll be available for comment by Board members.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Muller. Nat Bodikheimer, you've got a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if I could restate what I heard from Jerry back as far as the July 1st timeline, make sure I understood it. So what I heard is if we don't have an adopted fair share plan by July 1st.
But yeah, by June, by June 30.
June 30.
Yep.
That we are vulnerable to, at that point, we would have no plan, and any developer who wants to propose an affordable housing project, that site would, would have a, a right to develop. What is the, can you just, well, I'm going to come back. They would, we would not be in a position to tell them that they could not build affordable housing on the site. So we would, we would no longer have that latitude to choose where affordable housing is located in the, in the community.
They would not have the absolute, they would not have the absolute right to build on that site, but they would have to bring litigation. But as opposed to where we are now, where, where they're constrained from bringing litigation, they can bring it, and they're going to be in a good position if we have an affordable housing obligation, and we do, and we are not, have not implemented it within Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. So I think it's pretty far down the road to where you were going, Nat, but not quite there. Is that clear, if I muddy things?
All right. Well, I'm just a little weird that you're, that, that I'm conflating two things. So because of the negotiations that have taken place with the developers who have, whose projects are set forth in the plan, okay, not only would we be subject to builders' remedy purchase, but we would also be subject to litigation from the developers with whom the municipality has conducted negotiations. So both, so it's both things.
Yes.
It's both things. So, so, okay. So we're subject to litigation, and I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the gravity of, or, you know, or the, the parameters of what we're vulnerable to if we don't adopt the plan before June 30.
Yeah, right, exactly. And I think those are very good questions, and it does address that key issue of what, what gravity is the municipality subject to if it doesn't proceed with this and approve the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan by the 30th, which means basically by today.
It, it does mean by today, and I'm glad you said that, because after the Planning Board adopts a plan, council has 48 hours to
Endorse.
Prove it, endorse it, excuse me, thank you. And it has to be filed with the state, and the 30th is Monday. And so we, we really are talking about doing this business tonight. And so that, that's an important thing to, to understand. Are there other questions from, from Board members for Jerry before we move on to Elaine? Mr. Taylor?
Just to follow up on, on Nat's comments, Jerry, could you be clear in more detail? With approval and compliance, what is the flexibility available to the council thereafter? You dealt with that a moment ago. Could you restate or clarify what the freedom or flexibility is?
So as I've indicated, I think the Board has very little flexibility, and I think the Council has very little flexibility as well, because the question has come up, I know in my office, as we've discussed, what happens in Princeton or other towns where the Planning Board adopts the ordinance, but the governing body doesn't endorse it? And we look at each other, and we say, beats me, I think.
Adopt the element, not the ordinance.
I'm sorry, adopts the element, and it beats me. At that point, we, the municipality would not have complied with the requirements that have been set forth in the regulations and laws, starting 19, 2024, and I think it would have that vulnerability, what we talked about. Does that help, John?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
If I could answer that as well, one of the other deadlines that's coming up is next March is when all towns, including ours, would have to have all the ordinances adopted that would effectuate the plan. Those are normal land use ordinances, or the processes at least, so those would still be introduced at council, come back to the Board for Master Plan consistency review, and then go back to the Mayor and Council for a hearing there. And then obviously, if those were, were put into place, the applications, the individual ones that, we'll talk about the projects tonight, would also still come back to the Planning Board for a regular site plan review. So this does not replace any of those, you know, levels of government between the Planning Board and the Council. It's just the kind of catalyst before those.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for adding that, Mr. Lesko. Elaine Klishen with the firm of Clark, Caden, Hens, welcome. Thanks for, for all your work on this, and thanks in advance for letting the, the public know how the plan is constructed and whatever else is on your list of things to say.
Thank you very much. Hello to the Board. It's nice to see everybody again. Before I get started, I'm actually going to kick this to Michael Sullivan, my colleague and the principal in charge at Clark, Caden, Hens, to do just a little bit of setup work on the history of affordable housing and affordable housing in Princeton, and how we got to where we are tonight.
Okay, let's be efficient with our time, everyone.
So I'm not going to, just, just to be clear, I'm not going to give the, I'm not going to give the history of affordable housing in Princeton, but I will.
That's what I was afraid of.
But I do think it's important that there's a few things that we talk about that are sort of the guiding principles of this plan. Although now Princeton consists of a single municipality rather than the former township and former borough, the legacy obligations of the previous housing plans, which separated the borough, still exist, and they maintain this artificial distinction. And in an effort to move past this and create an affordable housing plan, it really reflects the totality of the borough, or the municipality as a holistic entity. There's going to be some re-characterization of third-round plan obligations and fourth-round plan obligations. Elaine's going to tell you all about that. I'm not going to tell you all about that. But in doing that, there are many benefits that can be realized, and we think it's important. First off is the elimination of the former borough's unmet need, which is an ongoing obligation at this point. It then provides the ability to claim bonuses for those units that are coming out of unmet need and going into this combined plan. It also allows a stronger ability, a broader ability for the municipality to plan for future housing locations determined to be the most appropriate, not just for the former borough, former township, for the entire municipality. And this means in walkable locations, close to transit, close to jobs, it's close to essential goods and services, and close to those third places that we gather socially that aren't work, that aren't home, where we convene and the sense of community develops, and where I would imagine that folks are having conversations about the fourth-round housing plan right now. So, so this represents a comprehensive municipality-wide approach to new residential development, which includes affordable housing, that embodies sound planning principles, sustainable development strategies, and thoughtful urban design practices, along with adaptive reuse, without regard for the divisions, the former divisions between the former borough and the former township. So I think that that's important to say that upfront. And while I've given you that overview of the guiding principles, which, which I think this plan embodies, I'm now going to hand it off to Elaine Klishen, who's going to take you through the details of this and try to stay awake. But, and then following Elaine, I believe Justin is going to be, give you some more detail on the sites that are going to comprise the plan. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. That is really important context to understand. So I appreciate that. Ms. Klishen?
So I get to dive into the numbers. So I do want to spend a couple of minutes talking about what Michael just made reference to, which is that long ago, the former borough had a two-part prior round obligation. The first part was what's called the Realistic Development Potential, or RDP, which is the part of the obligation that it was required to satisfy. And then the second part went into this amorphous bucket called unmet need, which is the part of the obligation that the borough had said, you know, we really don't have enough land to satisfy this, but we'll do these other things to try to generate new affordable units. And the thing about unmet need is, as any units that are generated through the unmet need mechanisms come online, no bonuses are available. So the municipality is at a disadvantage as long as these units are categorized as unmet need. But what I want to stress is that that unmet need from the former borough is not a new obligation that we're adding to the fourth round. It has been around since 1999, and all we're doing is re-characterizing it so that we have greater flexibility, as Michael referred to. We can take some bonus credits, which we were not able to do before, and we reduce the actual unmet need that comes forward as an additional obligation to the fourth round. So just to run through the numbers very quickly, the former borough had a prior round obligation of 311 units, and it said, we really can't do 311. So it wound up with RDP, Realistic Development Potential, of 88, which must be satisfied, and then 223 that the former borough would try to satisfy. And in fact, 15 units came online as a result of unmet need mechanisms to defray that 223, some of which would have been eligible for bonuses had those units been RDP units and not unmet need units. The 2019 settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center actually went one step further, and it said, we recognize that the former borough has this two-part obligation, and that additional units will come online through these unmet need mechanisms. And guess what? They must be credited to the former borough's unmet need before they can be used to satisfy any future round obligation. So here we have a 223-unit unmet need from 25 years ago that still needs to be satisfied first in 2025, before any units generated in the lands of the former borough can be used to satisfy the fourth round. When you think about the ramifications of that, it actually forces bad planning, because it forces the municipality to place all of the units that are going to satisfy its fourth-round obligation in the lands of the former township. Very, very hard to do that without building some new units in areas of the municipality that I know the municipality does not want to do a lot of building in. It preserves this outdated distinction between the former borough and the former township, and it preserves an old obligation that it turns out can in fact be completely discharged. The municipality does have sufficient space to provide all of these units. And as long as the units are categorized as unmet need, no bonuses are available. So the municipality has approached Fair Share Housing Center about removing that requirement, and they are amenable to this, and they are allowing all the existing units in the former borough to be categorized not as unmet need, where bonuses are not available, but as realistic development potentials, so the borough, the municipality can claim available bonuses. And in return for that flexibility, the municipality has agreed to bring the 88 units that still exist as unmet need into the fourth round as an additional affirmative obligation, again, with bonuses available. So we have the much higher realistic development potential of 223, but we're allowed 56 bonus credits now, which we were not allowed before. And importantly, the 48 affordable family rental units that are coming from the former seminary are eligible for one-for-one bonus credits. So those 48 units are actually satisfying 96 units of credit. The remaining 88 comes forward into the fourth round. I do want to make one point on the record. Mr. Muller talked earlier about correcting minor typos and such. There is a small inaccuracy on pages 37 and 38 of the plan. The totals at the bottom of that table, where it says available bonuses 56, that number is correct, but if you actually add up the bonuses applied to each compliance mechanism, it adds to 60. So we are taking out four bonuses so that the individual lines add up to the total correctly. But the municipality is not losing anything. It was always eligible for 56 bonuses.
Elaine? What, what exactly is a bonus credit, to be sure that I'm clear?
It is an additional, it's hard, it's, so in the prior round and third round, you were allowed to satisfy up to 25% of your obligation, not with actual units, but with bonus credits for producing certain kinds of units. So the prior round and the third round, they happen to be family rental units, and one-for-one bonus credits were available for family and special needs rental units, up to 25% of your entire obligation. In the fourth round, you are still entitled to 25% bonus credits, but the kinds of units that qualify are entirely different, which is one of the reasons we thought it was important to keep the seminary units in the third round, where they are eligible for one-for-one credits, as opposed to a half a bonus for each one. So when you add the 88 units of unmet need and the fourth round obligation together, you're not adding a new obligation, but making this change provides the municipality, as Michael said, with more flexibility to plan well, provides greater benefit to the municipality, this two-for-one credit. You have more units where people don't need cars for every errand, and perhaps some people who commute in might be able to live here near their jobs. And it acknowledges that the municipality overall does have enough room to satisfy its entire obligation without any adjustment. So Fair Share has agreed to this, and I understand that we are in the final stages of putting together a settlement agreement that reflects that. So shifting to what's actually in the plan, I'm going to do a very quick overview. The first part of the plan is what's called the Housing Plan Element. It includes the very boring history of affordable housing, both in New Jersey and in Princeton, and a lot of required census information, which you would think would more appropriately belong in the land use element or some other part of the Master Plan, but no, the Fair Housing Act requires that it be in the housing plan. So that's where it is. It's kind of a demographic snapshot of the municipality right now with some projections about housing units and population and employment. The second section, which we're going to spend most of our time on, covers the affordable housing obligations for each round and how the municipality has satisfied them or proposes to. And then the third section addresses the administration of the affordable programs, affordable housing programs in the municipality. It's important to say that a lot of what's in that third section is dependent on updated rules from both the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency and the Department of Community Affairs, and those updated rules are not finalized yet. So when they are finalized, we will probably need to go back and amend some of the documents in that section. Right now, the documents that the municipality adopted in 2020, things like your affordable housing ordinance, your mandatory set-a-site ordinance, the affirmative marketing plan, those are all still in place and still valid, and so we have left them alone until we know how they need to change. So to go back to the second section, the obligation and how we satisfy it, the new law requires a review of all prior round and third round mechanisms and their current the new law requires a review of all prior round and third round mechanisms and their current status, so we have included that. It is actually very impressive how much progress the municipality has made on the commitments that it made in two thousand twenty. Almost all the compliance mechanisms that it proposed then are either completed, approved, or under construction, plus one new mechanism is being added, and the municipality is carrying a forty-four credit surplus into the fourth round. So when we look at the fourth round, which is really the focus of this plan, the municipality stipulated to the Department of Community Affairs' calculation of its prospective need of two hundred and seventy-six. So two hundred and seventy-six, that would include twenty-five percent bonuses. When we bring forward that additional obligation from the former borough of eighty-eight, we get to three hundred and sixty-four. Again, those eighty-eight are eligible for bonuses. So if we take twenty-five percent of that total, three sixty-four as bonuses, those are ninety-one bonuses, which brings the number of units we need to generate down to two seventy-three. And then we add in the forty-four credit surplus, now we're down to two hundred and twenty-nine actual units. And the plan proposes two hundred and forty-nine, so we have a potential twenty-unit surplus if all of the units proposed in the fourth round portion of this plan actually come to fruition. So I'm going to hand it over to Justin to talk about each of the sites in a little bit more detail. But that's an overview of what's in the plan itself.
Thank you very much, Elaine. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Elaine. I am going to start by sharing my screen. This is going to be mostly visual with me talking. And these are the new sites proposed to satisfy the prospective need in the fourth round, and I'll zoom in in a second. Jerry, this map is in the plan, and the ones I'm going to show in the next thirteen slides after this are in the appendix, or very similar ones are. Though I think we probably should just mark this as an exhibit.
Okay.
So we'll call this PB one.
Yep.
So on page one of PB one, you can see the thirteen sites in red, and I'll zoom in, but I just want to show the totality of the municipality first. And they're really in something of a ring, either in the core of the town or just outside of it. And let me zoom in just so you get a better, better look. We're going to look at each one individually next. But so you got your bearings, you could see Nassau Street towards the bottom, Harrison Street, where my cursor is, Witherspoon Street over here, where my cursor is now. Nine of the sites are in the former borough, though, and, and four of them are in the former township. Though the breakdown of units and affordable units is closer to about half and half, with about forty percent, forty-seven percent of the total units proposed in the former township, and forty-five percent of the affordable units shown here in the former township as well. And I bring that up even though that's really just coincidental. There was no intention to balance these or make any specific numerical arrangements. Like, like Elaine just said, we're really trying to get away from these distinctions in the consolidated town. But this is really just how things broke down based on the sites available and utilizing those good planning principles. And I'll, I'll just mention them quickly. I know Michael Sullivan went into them a little, but most of the planning principles can be found on page eight of the text of the plan, which references goals of the master plan adopted by this board in two thousand twenty-three. That includes things like the land use goals of enhancing the existing pattern of land use and increasing residential density appropriately to promote housing affordability and variety in housing. Additionally, mobility goals, such as reducing inbound commuting through the development of additional housing, particularly where jobs and services are located, are listed in on that page, and as well as supporting economic development and natural resource conservation goals. Page twenty-eight of the element also discusses the ways in which the plan is consistent with the state development and redevelopment plan. So zooming back out and moving on to page two of the exhibit, here are the new sites in the fourth round plan. This is the first one. More information about these can be found beginning on page sixty of the element. I'm going to go over them kind of just higher level right now. First, we have on, on page two here, the scattered site properties on Witherspoon Street owned by Bob Halyard. These are currently within the AHO seven with an active planning board application. And these are an inclusionary development project with sixty-nine total units, fourteen of which would be designated affordable, and something like twenty or thirty units currently exists on the sites. This is both an infill project and an adaptive reuse one. I do want to note in the plan on page sixty-two that we need to add a parcel to the text, and that would be block fifteen oh one, lot eighty-two, which was erroneously left out. You can actually see it here filled in. This is part of the parking lot behind the former segregated school on Witherspoon and McLean. While we're at it, we should also add in the condo units you see down here in the building on, on the corner of Witherspoon and Quarry. These are blocks seventeen oh three, lots eighty-seven point oh two through eighty-seven point oh five, and we only listed the shared lots surrounding them of eighty-seven point oh one. So again, just another error, but the intention was always there to include it. We would also look to update these in the map on Appendix E. Moving across Witherspoon Street to page three of the exhibit, this is a mixed-use, mixed-use inclusionary development with twenty-five apartments, five of which would be affordable and a small commercial space. There's currently a vacant two-story office building on the site at one forty-five Witherspoon, with surface parking in the rear, and that building has been vacant for about four or five years now. And you could obviously also notice that this abuts the Princeton Cemetery to the, on two sides. So next up on page four of the exhibit, we have the site of the Whole Earth Center, Princeton Foot and Ankle, the currently vacant restaurant space. I think that used to be, I'm going to mess up the name. I don't speak Italian. Moving on, and then two buildings at three sixty-four and three sixty-six Nassau Street. This is a mixed-use project with a total of a hundred and thirty units, twenty-six of which will be affordable, and the Whole Earth Center store will stay on the site in a new space. Moving on to page five of the exhibit, we have the Jewish Center of Princeton on Nassau Street, highlighted in red. An affordable housing overlay was adopted on this site as part of the third round, though we have not seen any units produced to date. In this fourth round plan, we expect a nineteen-unit building with four affordable units on the vacant portion of the lot on the corner of Nassau Street and Cedar Lane. Driving west on Nassau Street, on page six here, we have the lot at two forty-five, two forty-seven Nassau Street. This site is behind J Cycles and roughly across from the IVN, Hokey Haven, Pizza Den area. This is also currently in an affordable housing overlay, though similar to the last one, we had not seen any units produced there. This site would include one building with ninety units, eighteen of which would be affordable, as well as commercial space. And this is currently an underutilized site with asphalt parking lots and buildings set back away from the Nassau streetscape. The commercial space proposed would join the Nassau streetscape, where it's currently just the entrance to the parking lot. Next up on page seven, we have two lots at forty forty-two North Tulane Street and thirty-two Spring Street. This is right next to the Spring Street parking garage, catty corner to the mixed-use building with DeAngelo's Market and a few other commercial spaces with apartments above. One of the lots included is the former building of Cops Cycles and the gravel lot next to it. Cops unfortunately has been out of business for some months now. The other lot is currently vacant at forty forty-two North Tulane Street. The proposal is for a forty-unit building with eight affordable units and commercial space on the first floor. And page sixty-six of the plan erroneously mentions the total number of units at thirty-two, but that should be changed to forty. The typo just comes from the market rate units being thirty-two, plus the eight affordable ones. Next up on page eight, we have two parcels on Spring Street. To get your bearings, Hamilton Avenue is to the north, and Barbara Bob Sigmund.
This is Spruce Street, you said. Sorry.
Yes, Spruce, excuse me. Hamilton Avenue is to the north, Barbara Bob Sigmund Park is over here, this kind of pizza slice, and the Westminster Choir College campus is just off the screen. There's already a ten-unit naturally occurring affordable housing building here at eighty-six Spruce Street with a large underutilized surface parking lot behind it. There's also a recently renovated two-unit building at ninety-two Spruce Street here. The proposal is to add thirty units to the site in three buildings with the majority of the units over the underutilized parking lot. There will also be a publicly accessible pathway from Hamilton Avenue to Spruce Street and then towards Nassau Street, where many people already cross through the parking lot. Moving on to page nine, these are two lots between State Road two oh six and Mount Lucas Boulevard. This is a really interesting opportunity, not just based on its location, which is really walking and biking proximity to so many things, but also the elevation difference between the two roads. The plan calls for a mixed-use development with eighty residential units, thirteen of which would be affordable. And to get your bearings, there's currently a drive-through bank on the end, a dry cleaner on the southern lot, and an office building with parking lots on both sides on the northern lot. On page ten here, we have twenty-nine Thanet Road. Don't mind the title below it, we'll get to that site next. The plan calls for eighty-five for sale units, seventy, seventeen of which would be affordable, and those would also be for sale. All of the units would be in stacked townhomes and away from the environmentally sensitive features of the site that you could see in green and yellow here. And this site would be incorporated into the Turhune-Harrison Mixed Use Village, of which we received a Smart Growth Award from New Jersey Future last year. Another part of that mixed-use village is here on page eleven. This is the underutilized Nixon Building at four fifty-seven North Harrison Street, with an even less utilized surface parking lot in the rear of the site. This stranded asset would be replaced with a one hundred and ninety-one unit building with forty affordable units. And this would add a connection to the Avalon and Pearl Senior Housing Sites to further connect the mixed-use village. So you could walk, drive, bike from North Harrison Street to Turhune Road, which is just slightly off the, the screen here. Then the new road that's being built and gets you all the way to the Princeton Shopping Center. And we're almost there, just three more sites, and these three will be a hundred percent affordable sites and on municipal land. The first one shown here on page twelve is the Chestnut Street Firehouse in red, just north of Nassau Street here. We're working with Princeton Community Housing on a sixteen-unit development here, which would adaptively reuse the historic Chestnut Street Firehouse and add a community space commemorating firefighters in Princeton. It will also add in green space that does not currently exist and add public parking back on the street while also having tenant parking in the rear. And that just reminds me, I haven't mentioned it really thus far in, in this presentation, but the plan mentions the mass transit connections that are pretty close to just about all of these sites, be it the, the two NJ Transit bus lines we have, the Coach Bus Line or the Muni Bus. And those are obviously, in addition to their locations, like I mentioned, which would allow tenants, you know, both in the market rate and in the affordable units, to walk places and bike places. Moving on, we have the Harrison Street Garage and Firehouse here on page thirteen, and this would include thirty-four affordable units at minimum. The public works uses on this site would be moved to the municipality's River Road facility. And similarly, we have the John Street DPW site here on page fourteen, and the DPW uses here, including the heavy machinery and salt trucks that start and finish their trips at this site in the Witherspoon-Jackson neighborhood, would be relocated to River Road. And just as a quick aside, the nineteen ninety-six master plan said this facility would be relocated or recommended the relocation by nineteen ninety-seven. Princeton Community Housing will also construct and manage the thirty-five affordable units on this site in multiple small-scale buildings. And as you can see here, this does not include the community garden to the south of the site. That's not going anywhere. That's staying as it is. And you can also see how close Community Park School and Community Park are to this site. So those are the thirteen new sites. They include two hundred and forty-one affordable units and six hundred and three market rate units for a total of eight hundred and forty-four units to fulfill our obligation until two thousand thirty-five. I'm sure there will be questions from the board and the public, and I'm happy to take them. But Madam Chair, I'll, I'll hand it back to you now, though Mr. Mueller may want to say something before we get into questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lesko. Jerry Mueller, do you have anything?
No, I think.
Before we, okay.
Very thorough presentation by Justin and Elaine. And I have nothing.
Okay, great. For the public, we now have forty-nine folks who are in the attendees section, and as I mentioned earlier, we'll bring folks over one by one in the order in which hands were raised. I will commence now to open the public portion. So if you would like to address the board, now is the time to raise your hand virtually by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And of course, you should feel free to pose questions. In addition to making your comments, we will pause periodically to address questions. We won't try to answer questions after each person speaks or generate a dialogue, you know, sort of one by one, but we will, you know, take note of the questions and, and do our best to address them all. And around nine, maybe nine fifteen, we'll, we'll take a ten-minute break. Just a heads up about that. So, so with that, the public comment portion of the hearing is open. And Ms. Phillip, will you or Mr. Henderson bring over Eileen Byrd and Evan Anderson? And then next after that will be Dana Malina and Chris Sturm.
Ms. Byrd, can you? Okay, Ms. Byrd, can you put your video on?
I hope so. One moment.
Mr. Anderson, you can deactivate your video until, until your testimony begins. What you did was just unmute yourself. If you could mute yourself and, and turn off your camera. Okay.
Yep. If you could, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give me the truth?
You're on mute, Ms. Byrd.
Um, okay, hang on, mute.
Yep, no, no, you're.
No, you're all good now.
You're fine. And if you could just state where, where in Princeton you live, if you were living in Princeton by street, but not the address.
Morayon Avenue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make this short. I support this plan, and I like that it prioritizes affordable housing, and I appreciate the presentation that we're given. So yeah, I support it. Check.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the succinctness and, and your willingness to be here and express your views. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last name, and the street you live on.
Evan Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, John Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. My name is Evan Anderson, Princeton resident, and I'm also a member of Princeton Future. Princeton Future is pleased to see that Princeton has chosen to select locations for affordable housing in or near the downtown core, close to public transportation as part of the next round of affordable housing obligations. Princeton has adhered to urban planning and smart growth principles, consistent with those described in Princeton's master plan, situating many sites on public property and currently underutilized infill. We endorse this approach. For me personally, I'm delighted that a proposed thirty-five unit, a hundred percent affordable housing complex located directly across from me on John Street at the current Public Works site is included in this plan. My family and I would welcome the increased diversity, inclusivity, and vibrancy that will be added to the Jackson-Witherspoon neighborhood. Princeton Future would also encourage a town to consider including non-residential uses on the ground floors of some of these buildings, such as food and medical establishments, daycares, and other public places. There are many non-residential uses that are perfectly compatible, adding to the streetscape while also providing convenience, employment opportunities, and skills development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Carrie, could you bring over Dana Molina and Chris Sturm? And then after that, we'll have Ben Roman and Andrew Gomory.
Ms. Molina, could you raise your right? Could you raise? Did you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give the truth? Now, can you? You just-
You're oriented sideways to us. There you go. Thank you.
Yep, sorry about that. I got it. Sorry.
You swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do. Dana Molina, M-O-L-I-N-A. I'm at fifty-seven Laurel Road in Princeton.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my dog is choosing to play with his toy at this second. So I am the Vice Chair of Housing Initiatives at Princeton, but I just want to say I'm speaking on my own behalf. I am incredibly pleased that Princeton came up with very creative ways to use underutilized spaces and that we're not taking away open space, and that we're using underutilized spaces in the town that are already impervious. I think that it's creative in that manner. I do want to say that I wish that we had had more units that were affordable to buy in this plan. I know that it's incredibly complicated to get the proposals forward that we did. I know that we can't make any changes, but we will have future rounds, and I do really hope that we can have more affordable buy possibilities in the future. I think that's really important for our town. The last thing I'd want to say is that for some of the locations, I think that transit is not just access to affordable access to transit, but also how we're going to integrate the units into the roadways. One specifically, which is close to me, which is at Mount Lucas, I think it's fantastic to use that location. I'm super excited for there to be housing used there, but that intersection has already been a disaster, and I don't see anything in the plan as to how the intersection is going to be addressed, and so I would like to know more how the Planning Board will be reviewing access and how we can view the plans for the housing that's proposed, so that we understand how it integrates into the neighborhood.
And Justin, maybe you could just jump in in terms of the kind of review that will be undertaken once the property owner or developer comes in, because that's certainly a good question, and it's something that we will be reviewing in detail later, I'm sure.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm happy to jump in, because I, you know, I drive that intersection all the time. I know exactly what you're talking about. It, you know, I walk over there too, and I know what you're talking about even more-
My daughter was just hit by a car in that intersection, so I'm just like really in the crosswalk. She was, yeah, walking, so I'm just sensitive to how we're going to deal with even more cars.
Absolutely, and that's something, as I mentioned earlier, will work out, the ordinances first before our March deadline of next year, and then we're going to have a full Planning Board Site Plan Review. And most of- I'd say just about all the time, we have it for a site like this, we would have a traffic engineer look at it on our side. We would have a traffic study from their side that we review, and we certainly would keep in mind, you know, we're not going to do anything unsafe just to reach, you know, the goals. We're going to make sure, we're going to review these like we do any application, which oftentimes means three-hour meetings and a couple of them, and a couple of revisions, and all those sorts of things.
And would those be posted to the public, or is that not? Okay.
They absolutely will, yes. Once we get them, they'll be on our website.
Super. And then the last question is just in terms, I think some people really do care a lot about the aesthetics of the housing that's going in. I think a lot of people are very, very supportive of housing, and they're not so supportive of some of the designs for the housing that has come in, and I just wondered how that works, and whether there's any like shredding, if you will, in terms of design. There's no sprab anymore, so I just wondered how community involvement would, you know, at least have comments to to design.
That would occur at the Planning Board level as well. We would still encourage all the developers, like we do with all of our developers, to come in for a concept review before the Planning Board, if they would like, so we'll still do that too. Plus our behind-the-scenes work when we meet with them, but the main way will be at the Public Planning Board meeting.
And that's when the public would be able to see the plans at that meeting, not-
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to take up too much time.
They are posted ahead of the meeting, right?
Okay.
Ten days, is that the right, do I have that timeframe correct, Mr. Lesko?
Yes, at least ten days. We normally do them before that as well, so.
Okay.
So the plans are posted as well as memoranda from the professional staff to the board that flags certain kinds of issues. And so those are pretty easy to find through our website, but if you have any issues whatsoever, you know, reach out to the Planning Office and they can walk you through it.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again. I know how hard you all worked for this proposal, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for raising those those important issues.
Mr.- Could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So, yeah, so sworn or affirmed, if you please state and spell your full name and give your street name.
Okay. My name is Chris Sturm, C-H-R-I-S, and then S-T-U-R-M, is in Mary. I live at two seventy-eight Riverside Drive in Princeton. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to comment on your plan. I think it strikes a great balance between a hundred percent affordable projects and inclusionary projects, and my comments apply to both of them. We have such a great need for more housing in New Jersey and in Princeton, and both the affordable and inclusionary units are part of addressing that solution. Like you, I really feel for the people that serve me when I go to the doctor's office, when I used to take my kids to school, when I have others who work at the university, for example, and want, you know, want them to not have such long commutes. I know young people who are living with their parents and want more options to move out of the basement, and young families who are ready to buy their first home or to rent their first townhome. And it's getting harder and harder to do that, so more housing is a part of that solution. And then, of course, there's many older adults who want to age in our town and need more options to do that. So your plan addresses all of those needs. And the way that you've designed it, the locations are so thoughtful. You know, they're convenient, they're near transit, they're walkable. You're offering homeownership opportunities, and perhaps there should be more, but I know it's hard, and I'm happy to see those that are there. And you're thinking about green space. The one recommendation I would highlight is to make sure that when the designs come in, you're really orienting these details so that they work for the residents and for the pedestrians, and not so much for the parking lots. And you've done so much at the Princeton Shopping Center, but I look at that parking lot between the Alice and McCaffrey's with, you know, without the pathway through the middle, et cetera, and I'm like, it could be better. So I know that you're thinking about that too, and I want to highlight that. The last thing that I want to mention is that I moved to Princeton almost thirty, twenty-five years ago, because I wanted an inclusive community where there was more than one person of color in my child's kindergarten class, where people of all ages could afford to live here, and there were working-class people and wealthy people and everything in between. And I think this this plan continues Princeton's historic legacy of being a diverse and inclusive place that is a wonderful place to live with great neighborhoods. And so I really endorse the plan. I thank you for all of your hard work. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Yeah, hearing from multiple people about the importance of ped and bike amenities and and safety, and that is super important to know, so thank you for reinforcing that for us. Several more folks yet to speak, Mr. Andrew Gomory, Gomory, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. And then Jane Scott, and then Daniela Bonafede Chabra.
Mr. Gomory? Are you still here?
Yes.
Yes, he is. He's here, Mr. Mueller.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name, and your street.
Andrew Gomory, G-O-M-O-R-Y, Shady Brook Lane. I just want to express my support of the plan. I think it's terrific. I've lived in and around this town for fifty years. I also want to thank all the members of the various parts of the town government that have come together to make this happen. I am both surprised and kind of shocked at the amount of underused and underutilized space that you all have managed to find. This is just incredible nook and cranny work. Every place you mentioned, I just sort of slapped myself in the forehead and said, of course, what a great place to put this. I just think it's great that you've taken this approach, not segregated this off into large tracts somewhere at the edge of town. I just think it's terrific work. I want to express my just enthusiastic support, and thank you all for the great work you've done. It's terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Credit goes to council members for putting in a massive, massive amount of work along with our professionals and staff consultants. As I said at the outset, a lot of what, a lot of the work that that this entailed is beyond the scope and jurisdiction of the Planning Board because of the way the law now reads. And yet they have done have worked really hard to adhere to the important master plan principles that were outlined before, so I should not be talking now. I should let other people talk. Are we at Ms. Scott now?
I think so. Ms. Scott, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear?
Swear, Ms. Scott, in?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
Jane Scott, S-C-O-T-T, Battle Road. I too support this plan, and I'm impressed with the variety of locations, project sizes, and approaches that are included here. Some hundred percent affordable, many a mix of market and affordable, and all thoughtfully designed to make the best use of these parcels within our town center for the most part. I have a question which is hardly pressing, because we seem to have enough units as it is without adding this additional site, but if there's time to give us an update on the Valley Road school building site at the corner of Valley Road and Witherspoon, I'd be curious as to whether that might be a potential site for housing in the future. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks and thank the board for their excellent work.
Thank you very much. Justin?
You're frozen, Louise.
We lost her. We lost our head.
I'll jump in as Vice Chair now. Either Justin or perhaps David, can you address the question about Valley Road School?
All right, you can jump in, unless you want to counsel McCowan, but basically, it's owned by the school board. It belongs to the school board right now. We cannot put that in the plan and force them to do anything with it. But I'm also very interested in that, as I I look out the window every day at it. And I hope in the next couple of years, we can do something with it.
And I'll just comment that that site, in a way, dovetails with Westminster Choir College, which is so close to the schools, the high school and middle school, and seems like an ideal location for the school board to relocate their offices. So that's a precursor to freeing up the Valley Road site. So there's a lot of dominos that have to fall into place to make all of that happen, but it's certainly in consideration.
Thank you, and I see that Louise is back now, so.
Yes, I got a taste of the attendees' room. I was moved over there. Maybe instead of Ms. Scott, I'm not sure. But nice to be back, and well-played, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you.
I think so. I think the question about Valley Road has been answered, right?
Yes.
Good. So next up is, do we have Mr. Gene Rosenbloom? Is that, is that who comes up next? Ah, excuse me, I-
And it's me, not Mister.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
My name is Gene Rosenbloom, G-E-N-E, Rosenbloom, R-O-S-E-N-B-L-U-M, and I live on Grover Avenue. And I'm here because I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of Princeton Community Housing, and I wanted to express my and the trustees' support for this plan. It meets a critical need, and it helps meet the obligations for the fourth round, both very important goals. Affordable housing is a critical need right here in Princeton, not just nationwide, although it's also obviously a need nationwide. We have over one thousand households on the waiting list for housing at Princeton Community Housing. That includes young families, people working in town, and long-term residents who want to stay here.
Miss Rosenbloom, is that just Princeton residents, or is that people outside of Princeton as well?
You know what? I don't know the answer to that question. I can certainly get that answer for the board. Princeton's diversity is a really important part of what makes Princeton a great place to live. And the town's plan, it strikes a good balance, providing a range of housing opportunities and maintaining Princeton's character. And I think the previous commenters have highlighted some very important areas which make it very thoughtful, the plan. The gentle infill of affordable housing will help provide housing for low and middle-income residents, close to transportation, other services. And Princeton Community Housing looks forward to working with the town to provide these needed housing opportunities, and I thank the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenbloom. Was the Planning Board too was very happy to see the town partner up with Princeton Community Housing on these projects, so we look forward to seeing those plans come to us in the not-distant future, according to the rules, right? Okay, next up, we have, I don't know whether we moved anyone over yet, but next in the attendees' room, Ben Roman, Daniela Bonafide Chabra, and then Fabian Paolo. I may be butchering more names tonight than usual even. And I see Karen Jizerny as well, so we'll do you first, Daniela, and then Ms. Jizerny. Mr. Mueller, would you do the honors?
Sure. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I affirm it. Thank you.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
My name is Daniela Bonafede Chabra, that's, sorry for the length, B-O-N-A-F as in Franc, E-D-E hyphen C, double H, A-B-R-A, forty-four Prince William Court. And thank you for this opportunity. I'm speaking both as a almost-quarter-century homeowner in Princeton, as well as a trustee of Princeton Community Housing, like Gene who preceded me. I just want to really applaud the local government for coming up with this plan, which has a good balance of of infill and other kind of projects, hundred percent affordable, as well as a mix of market rate and affordable, and certainly so many in walkable or bikeable situations. I know this is a town, from being here over twenty years, that appreciates its green space and its country feel. and not having as many people have to drive in from whatever distance to work here as somebody mentioned before me. Medical assistants, dental assistants, bank tellers, our nannies, our garden landscapers, everybody works in our, in our businesses. I think it will also improve our environment. I also specifically applaud the, how this is going to improve, maintain and improve the diversity in town. We moved here specifically because it was an inclusive town and we appreciated the diversity that our children would grow up with. And again, I want to remind everybody the incredible lack of affordable rental homes to low income and, and lower income families in the state of New Jersey. And I think this will be a great contribution from our town, which happens to be a very lucky one. So thank you for the opportunity and thank you for all the work that went into this. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next up, I believe we have Karen Jazerni.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. My name is Karen Jazerni.
If you could raise, yeah, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
It is.
So sworn or affirmed, again, if you could just spell your last name and your address. Your street.
It's J E Z as in zebra, I E R, N as in Nancy, Y. And I live on Mount Lucas Road. And I serve, I have the real privilege of serving as the Chair of the Board of the Princeton Community Housing Community Board. And so you've got a, a run of all of us being enthusiastic about this plan. It is thoughtful, creative, ambitious, and we are delighted for the opportunity to be able to participate in helping to meet this incredible need for housing in our community and to welcome new neighbors to our many different neighborhoods within the town. Princeton Community Housing is particularly delighted to recognize that the implementation of the kind of gentle infill concept that was included in the master plan, which we endorsed a while back. And we believe it's really going to provide opportunities for neighborhoods to thrive. And that's part of what we are committed to. You may have heard us from time to time talk about the PCH difference, and that really is about helping our residents thrive in the communities in which they live. So the chance to do that in some new spaces is a real opportunity for us. We are looking forward to the chance to work with the municipality. We know that people have interesting questions and ideas and we welcome them. And I, we are working on getting an answer to that question before the end of the night about what the makeup is of that thousand-person waiting list, so you have a better idea of what that entails. But we just wanted to add our voice to the number of people who have really embraced this plan tonight, and we're glad to be among them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jazerni. And if you can't come up with that number tonight, don't worry about it at all. It is, you know, it would be interesting to know, but it is, it's not, not, you know, part and parcel of the, of the plan that's before us. And so I don't want you to feel as if, you know, you'll have failed if you cannot find that number. I don't think that you can restrict those applications to Princeton residents.
That's exactly right. Right. My hunch is that it's an affirmatively marked, all of our properties are affirmatively marketed and it's likely to be a broad range of people, not just Princeton residents. But that's my hunch, so we'll, we'll do our best to confirm it before the end of the night for you, just so that you know too, and the, and the rest of the listeners. But thanks again.
Interesting thing to know. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Fabian Paolo, and I am very sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Welcome. Mr. Muller, would you swear?
Yes, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do. And my name is Fabian Paulo, P A U L O T.
And could you give your street?
Yes, Grover Avenue. So I, I live right by the shopping center. So first I'd like to say thank you for all your work. I support the plan overall. But I just have one comment and one question specifically for the Princeton Shopping Center neighborhood. So I don't know if people realize, but by my count, there are six hundred eighty units that have either already been built or are in the process of being approved for right around the shopping centers. That's within point three miles. So that's a lot of units, yet it doesn't seem to get a lot of attention. Most of the attention is devoted to the other side of town. And I really hope that the town spends a little bit more time reaching out to neighbors, reaching out to this specific neighborhood to, to make its vision for this neighborhood a little bit clear. I don't quite understand what you're planning. And I think there, there could be some useful feedback that I think we deserve to provide, given the intensity of the development. For instance, was the plan for the ambulance building that's falling apart? Was the plan for Grover Park that is flooding and that we cannot cross every time it rains, no investment? Was the plan for mitigating traffic on Grover Avenue and Ewing Street? There's a lot of mention of this at a lot of meetings, but there's no concrete plan to address those. And you are adding another two hundred units, so it's only going to make those issues more important to address, and I hope it gets prioritized. Now for my question is, it's related to the Senate and Bond Drive office spaces. So I cannot disagree actually with the consultant that they're folding apart. I think they are not, one of them is not rented and it's kind of left to fall apart by the developer. There is a bridge that goes over the stream. They, they started fixing it a year and a half ago. They stopped fixing it. That means like nobody can get into the building. So if you're trying to rent it, that's not the best way to rent it if nobody can access it. That being said, your master plan, if I understand properly, says that you wanted to convert underutilized office spaces into R and D companies, which made a lot of sense to me. You're adding residents and you're adding jobs that go with it next to it. So you have a nice ecosystem at the shopping center where people live, can have really good jobs and then can maybe have lunch at the shopping center. But it seems like you are converting all those offices now into more housing. And so that's not clear to me, where are people going to work then? There's no, no company now anymore in that neighborhood, so they can, so who is going to have lunch at the shopping center? And it seems that all those people are going to work outside of town, which seems to go against the big plan of, for this neighborhood. So if you could clarify what your vision is, that would be helpful. Thank you. So I, I guess I would, I would have preferred mixed use, not just residential for, for those two office spaces. I think that would have made a lot more sense. That's kind of what I think Westminster is doing a little bit by the, by the train station. And yes, I think we'll have worked better. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that since the broader question of planning for that, you know, new sort of center of gravity, if you will, it is not, you know, part of the plan itself. The board needs to put a pin in that and, you know, take your, your comments and requests to heart and maybe think in terms of a forum or on a future planning board agenda or a conversation with, you know, the next time the Edens folks come in. Anyway, your point taken about the bigger picture. Your point is taken about the bigger picture, and as others have said, the pedestrian connections and all are have been looked at very carefully, as well as bike connections by the, by the municipality. And I think it, it will make sense at some point to have the kind of conversation that you're talking about. It's just not something that we can really drill down on tonight. But I, but I, but the, but the suggestion about mixed use in those locations, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of words in response to Fabian's point about losing sort of office space in this part of town. What I wanted to say is if you look at the census data that's in this housing element, you'll see that we actually have about twenty thousand net in commuters daily in Princeton. So there are plenty of jobs for the people who will be living in this housing that's being built. You know, we would love to see those kinds of ratables out in that part of town. I think, you know, we're having trouble attracting those kinds of users. And if we could, that would be certainly where we'd like to locate them. But, but I did want to assure Fabian that we think a lot about the balance between housing and places of employment. And in fact, a big part of this plan is trying to remedy an imbalance where compared to the ideal, I see Elaine nodding. I, you may remember the statistic, but I think the ideal relationship is one point five jobs to housing or one point five housing to jobs. And we have like two point seven times the number of jobs to housing. So we really have an imbalance that we're trying to fix.
Thanks, David. I hope Mr. Polo heard that because I think, oh, yes, he is in the attendees area. So good. I'm sorry. Yeah, thanks for adding that. Next up, we have Ben Roman. Is that correct? Mr. Roman, if you could, oh, thank you for activating your camera and unmute yourself and Mr. Muller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your address. I give your street.
My name is Benjamin Roman. Last name is spelled R O M A N. I live on Princeton Kingston Road. I am a owner of a single-family home, resident of Princeton for ten years, children in private school and I, sorry, in public school, and I strongly support this housing plan. A lot of the proposed sites for development are actually relatively in my backyard in Riverside neighborhood. And
Mr. Roman, we're having a little trouble hearing you. Maybe, maybe bring the phone closer.
Sorry, I'm out on the streets of New York. Is that better?
Yes.
I, I think it is. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I, I'm strongly in support of this plan that brings more dense housing to, to my neighborhood. And, and I want to thank everyone in the town who's worked so hard to develop these plans. I, I like the idea of a town that is, that's growing and that is diverse and where the people who work in our town are able to afford to live here. So thank you very much for everything done and that's all I can say.
Thank you very much, calling from the city. The big city. Next up, we have Seth Melman. And then after that, Dozier Hammond and Wendy Magar. Mr. Melman, would you, there you go, unmuted yourself, activate your camera, please. And Mr. Muller will swear you in.
Yeah, it says, there we go. Let's see. There we go. Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your street.
Seth Melman, last name is Melman, M E double L M A N, Adams Drive in Princeton. I, I, first of all, I just want to say, I was pleasantly surprised to see the plan as it was. I, I didn't expect it to be so balanced. I thought it was a, I was very happy to see the way it was. Sometimes things in Princeton don't always go in the right direction, but I think this plan seems to be in the right direction. A couple of questions. I tried to find the plan through the website and I could not find it. And I just wanted to know first, you know, if someone could tell me exactly where on the Princeton government website I would find the actual document. That'd be my first question. Second question was, would it have been possible for this, this call, for example, to have happened a week ago or two weeks ago? I'm just curious how we ended up sort of up against the gun with the dates and the timing. So those are my two questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lesko, I can let you speak, of course, to either of, both of those questions. Especially first, the finding of the plan on the, on the website. I know, Mr. Melman, in terms of timing, the, the way the law was amended last year provided for an extraordinarily compressed timeframe for all five hundred and fifty-five, it is maybe, municipalities in the state of New Jersey to prepare plans. Some of them are not doing so because they're suing the state or didn't accept their numbers or whatever, but it's, it's just, I, I, I think everybody would have liked to, to, you know, start, you know, seeing the specifics a, a little sooner, but it has been just an incredible lift to, to bring it to us tonight. So maybe then I already stole somebody else's thunder, but Justin, you could certainly add to what I just said, but starting with locating the plan on the, on the website.
Certainly. And Mr. Melman, if you send me an email, I'd be happy to send you the link directly. My email's on the website. It's just my first initial and last name at PrincetonNJ.gov. But for your knowledge and for everyone else's, we, we've had it on the, we have a dedicated master plan page and we've added it to that. We've had it on the planning boards page, which also includes a link to all the master plan elements and other documents. It's in the green bar to the left of that and in the middle of the page. But then we, one thing we always do before meetings is we put the links for whatever's relevant to that meeting on the calendar page too. So that's probably the easiest way to get it if you just go to the Princeton Municipal Calendar or just, you know, Google Princeton Municipal Calendar and then look for tonight's meeting. And there's a hyperlink right there that you can open it in your browser or in Adobe if you haven't.
And does it, does it go directly to the document?
Yes, the link does.
Okay.
Yes, it, it might take a minute to load because it's about four hundred pages with appendices, but it'll go directly to it.
Okay.
Actually, if you go to the calendar and click on the meeting, there's a, you have to click on more details in order to get to the actual agenda, you know, items. So there's double clicks, but.
Yeah, I went to the NJ, you know, the regular NJ.gov site and that's, I was trying to find it through there, but I, I will, I will try this other method. But again, it just seems to me, you know, I know everybody would, and again, I'm sure this was hard to put together the whole deal. But it seems lots of times in Princeton, we, we seem to end up with these critical issues with very short times for the public to deal with it or to respond. So, but like I said, in this case, I seem, I'm very happy with what the final result was. I just would have loved to hear about it last week, but it's, you know, better late than never. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melman. Thank you. Dozier Hammond. Mr. Hammond, if you could unmute yourself, activate your camera. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Muller, go ahead.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, or, or affirmed, please state your full name and give your street. I give you street.
Dozier, D O S I E R, Hammond, H A M M O N D, on Lee Avenue. And thank you very much for the plan that you put forward. I also want to echo the comments that the previous gentleman made, though I think you've given some good answers to that. One question is, when did it go up on the website? When was this available? And, and so if you could answer that first, that'd be great.
Ten days ago.
Ten days, yeah, right.
It was Friday, the thirteenth.
Thank you. That's good. Ten days is very good. I like to see that. I just want to thank you for doing a good job of planning, putting things in a lot of good places. I think that you were very good and creative in getting your bonus credits, and that's fantastic. But the good thing about bonus credits is that, you know, it makes it easier to do your job, but it also means there's less affordable units. your job, but it also means there's less affordable units actually coming online. And I think Princeton can do a lot more, 241 units in 10 years, if I understand it, is 24 units a year. That's okay. But I think the town could do a lot more. That's not necessarily up to planning board, more of the council and what they can do. But I think we need to work on getting more affordable housing, given the cost of housing in Princeton. I think you should look at trying to, and I'm sure you have, but continue to look at places like getting more than 20%. 100% is great, 20% is okay, but if we get 25, 30, 35, 40, up to 50%, and I think one of the proposed developments, which is still not happening yet, is supposed to be 50/50, which would be great. But we just need a lot more affordable housing in Princeton. We should also consider having more downtown. You know, I know that this has been a hobby horse of Princeton Future for a long time, but I think it's worth looking at. Can we take a lot of those one and two and three story buildings and add a few stories and get a lot more affordable housing, maybe 50/50 that's been proposed before? Doesn't have to be 50%, but that would be great. But we just need a lot more affordable housing. We should also think, if we've already met our obligation, that we could think about doing Princeton preference. And yes, you know, as many people have pointed out, Princeton is different than a lot of towns in New Jersey, where we forced a lot of people out of town who could afford to be here. And there's some way to bring them back in and that would be great, or to keep people who are being forced out now from leaving. So I want you to think about all those things. I think we can do a lot better than 241 over the next 10 years and I hope you're able to work on it. Again, thank you for finding all these good sites, but we could do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Wendy Mager? Ms. Mager, if you could, there you go.
Wendy, if you could raise your right hand, if you could, do you swear or affirm that, if you could please say your full name for the record?
Mager, M A G E R.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
And could you give your street?
Yes, I live on Cherry Hill Road. I wanted to speak in support of this plan. I usually, because of my affiliation with Friends of Princeton Open Space, see kind of the flip side of the smart growth package, which is preserving important lands for their eco services in the edges of town. And this municipality has been great about doing that, particularly in recent years. But it's always a little bit tempting to wonder what is the price we're going to pay? And so when I looked at this plan and read about it in the newspaper, I shared the reaction of other people who have spoken, which is, wow, this is really good. And I just wanted to say that and to thank everybody who worked on it and congratulate you on the manner in which you've explained it. And yay, looking forward to it. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, Wendy. Now, I saw that Lance Liverman had his head up, hand, head up, hand up earlier. I don't see that now, but I see that Mr. Minio, Pennio, Tom Pennio has been brought over. So Tom, if you would, there you go. Jerry, can you swear Mr. Pennio in, please?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please say your full name, spell your last name and give your street.
Tom Pennio, P I N N E O, Van Devenner Avenue.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've ever butted in front of Lance, so I hope it's good. I'm here to add my voice to the chorus of support for the work of the planning board, the council, our amazing staff and the consultants. While I'm sure there will be many more conversations over the implementation of the details, this plan lays out a really strong framework for the fourth round. It's consistent with Princeton's master plan and the principles of smart growth, and I support it. Many others have have noted in detail what is really so good about this. I do, however, have a couple of questions. My first question is about the balance between the private developer model and the 100% affordable model. It's not only pertains to the fourth round, but for what is yet to be built in the third round. I'd like to make sure that every opportunity is given to explain to the community how the board arrived at this particular balance of inclusionary development and 100% affordable. While I applaud the level of outreach, I think even more could be done, especially as it pertains to the economics of affordable housing and the choices we need to make for how to pay the financial costs required for providing them. A lot of ink has been spilled recently in the local press about the balance between the private developer route and 100% affordable route. I don't have to tell you that emotions run high on this subject. And I think it would benefit the community greatly if this body, perhaps in conjunction with council, created an opportunity for a deeper dive into the pros and cons of the two pathways. My hope is that the plan has broad support and that Princeton can serve as a model for how a deeply blue patch of America can get out of its own way and efficiently and effectively build the housing it needs. I fear that without further outreach and patient clarification, there will be continued vacuum of information, real or perceived, into which confusion and perhaps misinformation will inevitably seep. We should try to avoid that. The right forum could also serve to bring more people into the conversation that all too often takes place at the echo chambers at the margins. So my question is, can we build engagement through respect, patient outreach and our common interest in the collective good? I hope so, and I'd be happy to be a part of fostering that effort. My second question is, what framework exists for the plan to evolve? And and some comments have been made around this. This is a plan for the next 10 years, and it's likely that in the coming weeks, months and even years, plans will surface that are just as good or even better than some of the sites that are proposed here. Can we hear more about the mechanism that is available to evaluate and incorporate those? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, I'd like to jump in with the show.
Thank you, Mayor, and then maybe, well, anyone else, of course, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Lesko, go right ahead, please, Mr. Frida.
Thank you. Tom, thanks for your comments and thanks for all your involvement in the community, too. But I will say, like, your questions about understanding what the different options are as to how these units are provided, how they're paid for, what the different options are, I mean, it's a pretty common question, and I know we've had some public meetings where we've chatted about that somewhat, but I think we could probably do more in whether it's the governing body or the planning board or I don't know exactly what, but I think at some point it would make sense to have a public session that just really outlines, here's the way you can do it, here's the options, because it would be good for people to understand. If a developer is taking the risk, here's the pros and cons. If the town's taking the risk, here's the pros and cons. And I don't know that we've put everything together in one meeting at one time. So I'm happy to work with you and whoever to see if we can find somebody to help put together that and just just give people the facts and people can draw their own conclusions. But thank you.
Great, thank you.
And I, Mr. Cohen, any additional thoughts?
Well, I just, I wanted to actually punt to either Jerry or Michael Sullivan to talk about amending the element, because that's really what the question was about in terms of when other projects come up. And it is, it's a legal and a planning process.
Yeah. Yeah, so as with any master plan element, you're entitled to amend it. The difference between a housing plan element and like a circulation plan element is that when you do so, you're required to do so such that you do not upset the balance of the obligations that you have included in it. Over the course of 10 years, the municipality will be required to monitor what gets built, how many units are achieved through development and redevelopment. And while these are, this is the plan and there will be ordinances to implement the plan, as these sites get worked out, there may be shifts in the number of units where there may become a need for another site. And but we don't know that yet, because the site plans have not been approved or proffered in a in a complete way. Similarly, if there are, and I'll, and I'll say this, affordable housing development is largely a private sector enterprise. It's usually developers who are interested in developing and could contribute to that. It's less likely the municipality is saying, let's, let's go find a site to do a 100% affordable site. So if opportunities arise during the fourth round, the municipality is well within their purview to consider these and whether they contribute to the fourth round or not, to consider including them in a plan. And if there are surplus units for the next round, God help us, but the next round, then those units could be credited there. The way the Fair Housing Act amendments are set up, they envision the fourth round and all subsequent rounds. So these, they they've tried to draft a law that is going to persist without having any real revisions or amendments for the rest of time. So there's opportunities for amendments, there's opportunities to consider projects and like, like what's happened now, the the reutilization of sites, of offices that are vacant. Who knows what's going to be the unproductive sites of in the next five years or the next 10 years? So those opportunities may arise and the municipality is well within their purview to consider those. But when they do, it needs to be considered within the context of their obligations.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Michael was saying, I agree completely. It's a long period of time and one never can tell what might happen to a particular site and a particular developer. And if a site drops out of the program, the number of units are reduced because of site constraints, certainly appropriate for the municipality through the planning board and the governing body to add additional sites. And if there's really an exceptional opportunity and the site isn't even necessary for the fourth round, there are ongoing obligations after that. So I think Michael's, everything he says is a right on point.
And to Mayor Frida's point about, you know, thinking, thinking of a public forum of some sort where the decision making and what goes into it and how project, different types of projects tend to pencil out to different types of developers, et cetera. I mean, that's a, that's a really interesting overall topic, not, not one to, you know, to drill down on tonight, but, but a worthy thing for, you know, to consider for, for one of our meetings or a council meeting or a joint meeting. Anything else, anybody wants to add, Justin or anyone, before we go to Mr. Liverman? Okay. Thanks, Tom Pennio, for those questions. And we have Lance Liverman with us now. And then next up, we'll bring over Venite and then Ed Truselli. Mr. Muller, would you swear in, Mr. Liverman?
Thanks, Jerry, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please say your full name, spell your last name and give your street.
This is really weird, my name is Arden, A R D E N, Lance, L A N C E, Liverman, alive, V E R, M A N, 327 Witherspoon Street, Princeton, New Jersey.
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you, Jerry. My comments are very, shall we say, to all of you, I want to thank you. You know, it's not, it's not easy to serve in a public, it's not easy. As everyone knows, I've done it for years. And I think that the plan that you've come up with is excellent and I want to thank you. I think that the mayor with the public forum is the excellent way to go. I think that the more you engage the community, the better we are at all of this when it comes to affordable housing. So I want to say, for my, I also want to say, I didn't know, I was listening and I try to listen and not say anything, but it's hard to do that. But I tried my best not to say anything. But I want to say that I read many comments about the mitigation, about flooding and the streets and all this. And all this, I'm sure, is taken into consideration when we looked at the plans for the affordable housing. So I'm not here to say anything, but to say, thank you. And that, that's it. And thank you, Louise, for doing a great job. I remember Wanda Gunning, he used to sit at your seat and he used to jump on me all the time. And you're doing a great, great job. You know, we don't hear.
Well, if I had one, one one hundredth the knowledge that Wanda has, we'd probably all be better off, but thank you for that.
Give it 30 years, Louise.
No, believe me, believe me, this is an excellent plan. We're moving forward and Princeton is so lucky to have all of you to serve. I thank, thank the God for all of you. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you, thank you so much, Lance, thanks.
Thanks, Lance.
Thank you.
Let's bring over Venite and then Ed Truselli.
And Madam Chair, I've been told, oh, and it looks like Venite's moving over, I was just about to say, had to move over.
Good.
Yeah. Venite, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, my name is Venite, last name is Madan, M A D A N, and I live on Nassau Street. First off, I just want to thank the board and all of our representatives for dutifully and thoroughly putting together a comprehensive plan. I realize how difficult these efforts are and there are all kinds of externalities and legalities that most of us probably will not ever understand, but that all of you do on our behalf and very much appreciate all of that work that you put into this. My comments are specifically related to the intersection of Nassau Street and Harrison Street. It's about a couple hundred yards from my home, so I've got significant experience with that intersection. I believe there's two proposed developments there, one on the side of the firehouse and the second with a whole earth complex there that would add a few hundred units to that intersection. What I would implore all of you to do is during the school day to try and traverse that intersection between 8:00 and 8:15 a.m. in a motor vehicle, on a bicycle, walking with children and see how difficult the task that is. That intersection in particular is already a very dangerous and difficult intersection to traverse. We've also got a number of 18-wheelers and large trucks moving through that intersection at excessive speeds. And I'm just concerned about the access of adding a few hundred units to that intersection, how the people in those units would be able to get on and off the roadways, along with everyone else who's already in that neighborhood. You know, we've got very limited ability to carry traffic specifically through that intersection. And also, when you take into account the development that's already been done at the Princeton Shopping Center, that's added, what I think another person mentioned earlier, 600 plus units that aren't fully occupied as of yet, as far as I can tell from going down to the shopping center regularly. So my concerns are, that's 800 plus units in, it's got to be about a half, half mile to a mile of roadway. I just think that a proper traffic and safety study needs to be done before we bring all of those units online, because I'm just concerned for the township and its citizens about what might occur if we don't properly manage that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond, Venite. I hope you're aware that there is a major engineering study of the Harrison Street corridor that's underway right now. It's been presented in preliminary form to the council and, you know, lots, lots of improvements, most of them further away from the intersection of Harrison and Nassau because that's so constrained, but all along in front of the shopping center, a road diet, multimodal provision, you know, better provision for pedestrians and cyclists and happy to connect you with the information from the study if you're interested.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much. And in particular, I think if that intersection is excluded, I would hope that we at least take another one. And in particular, I think if that intersection is excluded, I would hope that we at least take another look at it.
It's not excluded, it's just much more difficult. There's, there's less.
I know, there's less space, there's less physical space. Yes, I completely get it. I, I walk through it and drive through it multiple times a day. I get it and that's why I have concerns.
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask you to email me, same as Justin, dcohen@princetonnj.gov. And I'll make sure you have the information.
Yeah, I'll do that right now, thank you.
Sure, thank you. So let's bring over Ed Truselli and then the attendee identified as Trish. And I'll just say right now, if any, if any of the rest of the folks in the attendees room, of which there are now 35, if you would like to address the board tonight, now is the time to raise your hand. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Truselli.
Well, thank you.
Ed, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please say your full name, spell your last name and give your street.
Sure, first name is Ed, E-D, last name is Truselli, T as in Tom, R-U-S as in Sam, C-E-L-L-I. I'm a resident of Hopewell Township.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, first of all, to speak here tonight. And again, I'll keep my comments brief, but I, I just want to, on behalf of the staff of Princeton Community Housing, express our support for this plan. It would be quite the headline if I had something different to say, given all the support you've heard from our trustees and I'm thankful for their, their support this evening. I, I think the one thing that comes out with the comments tonight is the thoughtfulness of, of this plan. And what I mean by that is it's not just a satisfaction of a legal responsibility. It, it shows a little bit more thoughtfulness and, and consideration of, you know, what Princeton is as a community and what it hopes to be. And I've seen some other fourth round draft plans so far. It's my hobby to kind of look at those things. And this by far is a, a very thoughtful consideration of, you know, what Princeton wants to be and, and is today. So I, I just wanted to again, express our gratitude for being part of the plan. And, and I look forward, we look forward to working together with the community and with the municipality, you know, to make these things happen.
And just, just for the record, if you could identify a position with PCH.
I'm sorry, Jerry, yes, I'm the Executive Director for Princeton Community Housing.
Thank you.
And there was a question earlier about the waiting list. The, the reality is, as Karen mentioned, Karen Giuzzini mentioned, is that we do have to affirmatively market. So we, our waiting lists are not simply limited to Princeton residents, but the, the fact is that the majority of our applicants have a relationship to Princeton. Either they do live here, they've lived here in the past, they work here, they have family here. So the majority of our, our applicants are from, I would say, the greater Mercer County, Somerset County, Burlington County, Ocean County area of New Jersey, with some affiliation somehow to Princeton. So, hope that helps.
Thank you.
It does.
Thanks very much.
Uh, thank you very much. And our final person with the, with the remarks to say, and I'll just say one more time, if you would like to address the board, please raise your hand because after we hear from Trish, I will close the public hearing if no one else has, has raised your hand. Welcome, Trish, Mr. Mueller, we'll swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your.
My name is.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I heard that so many times. My name is Patricia Di Maio. That's D-I, capital M, A-I-O. And I live on Spruce Street. I was, I'm really glad to have attended this meeting to get a lot more context in terms of the complexity of all this planning and just, and a little bit of the history of, you know, how, how the town, how Princeton is where it is today. So that, so that was great. I mean, I think I'm a little remiss in, in my duties because I only, you know, just realized that all this was going on quite recently. I have a question, I'm not sure, I was quite surprised to read my own address in that document, which is 96 Spruce. I'm not sure, but, you know, I seem to be on the other side of that, you know, sort of red rectangle or whatever the shape is. And I'm wondering if, you know, I, I'm just curious why 96 Spruce is even referenced there? Because I think it has to do with 92, 94 and then 88 or whatever the, the gray building number is. So I'm a little curious about.
Yeah, you're right, Trish. I actually used to live at 96 Spruce Street, so hi.
Wow, oh, wow. Oh, okay.
But yes, your house is not in the affordable housing site, I can confirm that for sure.
I knew, I knew there was somebody Cohen, somebody told me, oh, there was somebody whose last name was Cohen, as it, you know, who lived here, I think several, like at least two people for me. Oh, okay, so good, good to know you. Because, and I, I have a sort of a side question and it may not really be appropriate for this venue, but we, we had a little bit of a surprise with the house 92, 94. So David, now you know exactly which house I'm talking about. It went from being a twin of our house to them building another whole house in the backyard. So that was kind of a surprise. And not an entirely pleasant one, but okay, it was done. What, what about demarcations? Will, because there's no fence between us and them now? I mean, I guess that's a detail of the planning because now there's going to be more built, I guess, facing Wiggins, so kind of a continuation of, I think, the affordable housing that's already behind us. So will, will there be a fence put up or, or is that too much of a detail?
I'm glad you're raising the question and it is timely.
Yeah.
You know, part of what we'll be doing, as Justin mentioned, is writing the ordinances that enable each of these developments to happen. And buffering requirements are part of the ordinances. So we will, you know, definitely take note that it's a concern of yours and make sure that that's incorporated specifically into the zoning for that site.
Great, so I guess to keep abreast of this, final question is just to stay abreast of what the planning commission is doing. That's how I really will stay on top of it. Okay, great, great. Well, thank you, thank you very much. I mean, I, you know, when I see an empty lot, I don't think, oh, wow, we should build something there. I mean, I left Brooklyn to get out of density, but it's still not too dense for me. So, okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Mr. Lesko.
And Madam Chair and Mr. Mayo, I apologize for the typo.
Justin, your, your audio is bad now.
Is this working better?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And I was just saying, Madam Chair and Mr. Mayo, I apologize for the typo. First off, I just looked it up and we could remove that 96 Spruce reference on page 67, 77, 80 and Appendix K.
Thank you, quick correction. So seeing no other hands raised in the attendees room, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting now. And let's proceed with board discussion. Thoughts? Well, a couple of things I heard, which, which I do think, you know, warrant mentioning in a, you know, communication with council or, you know, comments slash recommendations that have nothing to do with the locations or numbers or anything else, but relate to pedestrian and bike connections and safety and amenities to, you know, suggest a keen attention to those things when the ordinances are written or finalized. I know drafts are, are already in the works, but they'll, they're just drafts and they'll be refined over time and, and need to be adopted by next March. And in a similar vein, perhaps, you know, in addition to commending council for its attention to smart growth principles and master plan principles, et cetera, and in keeping with those and with affordability objectives, incentivize or require, encourage to the greatest extent practicable green building and resiliency features in the site design so as to save money for residents, both in market rate and in affordable units. And also just, you know, with this heat wave still affecting us, you know, things like, you know, providing for shade, you know, perhaps water features, I don't know. There, you know, any number of, of ways to, to make projects, encourage projects to be climate adaptive and resilient. You know, I think that if we, if we can speak to those things as we again commend and find this plan substantially consistent, excuse me, consistent with the master plan. I feel like it's much more than substantially consistent, but I think those are the words that we need to use according to the, to the law. But I, those are my thoughts, I'd be interested in hearing anyone else. Oh, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. Just want to say, I think that the outpouring of support that we heard tonight from the participants shows the, the intelligence that was put into the, the, the plan by everybody who worked on it. So thank you all very much for that. There was one, there's a phrase that Dozier Hammond used and I want to just make sure that I'm clear on it. He used the word Princeton preference. And as far as I know, that there is no true Princeton preference. I just want to make, you know, throw that out there and see, you know, if anyone has, can clarify that, that phrase, is, is that a misnomer? Or is that a phrase that should not be used?
So I, I want to respond first, somebody else may have something they want to say about it. But the only thing that we cannot do is we cannot, if we establish a Princeton preference for certain units, we cannot count them towards our affordable housing obligation.
Okay.
But there is no reason, if we build more units than are required for obligation, there's no reason that we couldn't establish a Princeton preference for some. But it would mean, you know, that those would never count. And, you know, it's, it's something that's hard to do when you're trying to balance concerns about growth, you know, growing too fast with the need for housing. I mean, there are these sort of competing values. So, but I personally am open to having a conversation. You know, there was a letter in town topics today recommending not just a Princeton preference, but a preference for municipal employees to provide housing for them specifically, not just people who work in Princeton, but actual municipal employees. And I would love to see council take that up as a consideration to work towards.
I did not realize, that's interesting, that if you establish a Princeton precedent, that they can never count toward your affirmative obligation, that's.
Actually, can I jump in here?
Please.
That, that is technically true. We're talking about the difference between what the rules call present need and prospective need. Present need, which is the rehabilitation obligation, is intended to address substandard housing occupied by low and moderate income households who already live in Princeton. Prospective need is, is intended to create new units for low and moderate income households who want to move into Princeton. And that's how they make the distinction in the rules. So in theory, you could create new units and apply them to your present need obligation and establish a Princeton preference. And it would satisfy your rehabilitation obligation, but it would not satisfy your prospective need obligation. So right now for the fourth round, there's a rehabilitation obligation of 60 units. You could create new units to satisfy that obligation and allow Princeton, existing Princeton residents to have a preference. They would not satisfy your 276 or 364 future obligation. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thanks for clarifying.
Other questions or thoughts, comments from board members or staff?
Just a, a comment on the comment that, that Louisa made, that that's to be a finding by the board of, that this is, that the Housing Element Fair Share Plan is substantially consistent with the master plan. I don't think that's, that's certainly the case for, for an application. But for another element of, of the master plan, I don't.
Oh, it's just a simple adoption, right? I'm sorry. It's, this is not a consistency review, it is an adoption.
Right.
Thank you, Jerry, that's a really important distinction and it was foolish of me to go down that road. Sorry, my bad.
Yeah. Now, I just had a, a comment also, in terms of whether we, the board wants to propose any amendments which actually would amend the plan. As Justin went through the plan suggesting, you know, we had this, something need to be corrected here and corrected there, where it was clear in context what the intent was. I think we can do that with amendment, with amendments to the man, to the, the document before you. And I would recommend doing so. I don't know whether Elaine, I see you shaking your head, you great, yeah.
Yeah. I have that list.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
No, I, I, I wasn't suggesting with anything that I said before that, that those should be amendments to the plan. I feel like the plan is, stands, you know, on its own two feet and I don't have any suggested edits or changes other than those corrections.
Yeah, and you were not, I wasn't suggesting, you would suggest that, you were not.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
I just wanted to, this is kind of in response to the member of the public who wished that we could have brought the plan sooner. And I was tempted to say it at the time, but I, I want to say it now. I shudder to think how few hours of sleep Elaine and Justin have gotten over the last three months. I mean, the health impact, it's just, it's just insane. And so I really want to thank the two of you. You know, you deserve, along with me, the alliance share the credit for putting this document together, putting all this list of sites together. And I really, I really appreciate both of you.
Yeah, and just, just to add an accolade, just from a lawyer's point of view, in my office, when we first saw all these timeframes, we, the reaction was, you've got to be kidding, this really can't be done. But they did it.
Thank you, David, I appreciate that. I will, I will say, also in response to the member of the public who was talking about, well, what if a great site comes along that isn't in the plan? We now know these deadlines, at, at the end of 2034, January 2035, the municipality is going to have to stipulate to its fifth round obligation. By June 2035, we're going to have to have a plan. You can and probably should be thinking about generating new affordable units consistently.
Next week, not tomorrow.
By the time you know your obligation in October 2034, you'll be able to put, you'll be able to say, oh yeah, we've got this, this, this and this that will fulfill that. And it won't be the terrible time crunch that it was this time since we had no advance notice. Now we've got 10 years of notice, we can start accumulating units toward future obligations.
Yeah, absolutely right. I've already calendared.
I totally intend to have bought my Greek island by then.
To Elaine's point, I, I wrote a plan, as Ed said, for. To Elaine's point, I read a plan, as Ed said, for fun, of a North Jersey town pretty similar to ours. And their need was actually zero because they had been creating units throughout the past 10, however many years. So their plan essentially just took the form of a victory lap. And then additional sites that they want to investigate going forward. So if we could proactively get ahead of things like that going into the next round, I think that'd be even more ideal.
Yeah, thank you. Other other thoughts, other questions? Would Ms. Nuka?
Thank you. Thank you, Elaine and Justin, for putting together this terrific plan. I just wanted to ask a clarification question about the Princeton preference that was discussed earlier. So if that such a preference can be applied to units that are quote unquote, under rehabilitation, is that something that the town council has to determine and draft an ordinance on? How would that kind of preference be implemented?
Well, it's an interesting question. I know of only a few towns that are doing this. And I'm not entirely sure how they're doing it. My guess is it's a lottery with a preference for existing Princeton residents or employees in Princeton or whatever it is. So they would get a preferential place on the waiting list is what it would be.
Okay, so they would apply through the normal application process for affordable housing.
They'd have to be in, absolutely.
And one, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I believe that one way to apply those that rehabilitation obligation would be rehabbing some of the housing authority units that are actually Section 8 federal under, you know, Housing and Urban Development HUD framework, their voucher. It's, you know, voucher based housing. It is, you know, entirely separate and different from New Jersey's affordable housing framework, but we can you know, the the connection with them can be made through the rehab obligation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, and we actually do have some money in the spending plan for exactly that.
Okay.
And and I think council has been contemplating exactly, you know, concentrating on the PHA, the Housing Authority units for our present need, which means, you know, essentially that it can't be helping out with municipal employees or whatnot, because they're not living in those housing authority units right now. So I think there'd be different mechanism, you know, it's really the very beginning of a conversation. If there's public support for it, and I think there are a lot of different ways to do it, probably, depending on which populations you're wanting to help out.
I think there would probably be a lot of interest in, you know, preference for municipal employees, employees in the school district, teachers, others.
Yeah, that's certainly doable. That's very hard to get credit for.
Right. Thank you. Other thoughts? Or perhaps a motion? If someone were to make a motion, Mr. Mueller, it would you know, to to phrase it concisely, be to adopt the proposed fourth round housing element and fair share plan presented tonight and discussed?
Yes.
As amended, yeah.
As amended, and if you want, we could add a separate provision that says there should be a separate memorandum that goes to the council dealing with the issues of circulation, et cetera, and sustainability, that you would articulate it. That would not, Louise, that would not be part of the adoption, but but a separate memo that would go in conjunction with the the adoption.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Bodikheimer has his has his hand up. I don't want to cut you off, Jerry, but.
I did want to move the adoption of the plan as discussed and as described, and I, if somebody wants to suggest an amendment to include the traffic and other issues that Mr. Mueller was talking about, I just wanted to propose a clean, move a clean adoption.
Yeah, I I think that's what we're talking about and not the, the other things would be in a separate separate communication with council, not 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 proposed as amendments. So moved by Mr. Bodikheimer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Mueller, any any comments before we call the roll?
Not really. There is a draft resolution that's been prepared.
Oh, thank you.
Should I, would you, would you like me to read it or?
Yes.
Okay. So this resolution Princeton Planning Board, Housing Element Fair Share Plan for 2025, 35, fourth round, whereas Princeton Planning Board has been organized in accordance with NJSA, et cetera. Whereas on March 20, 2024, Governor Murphy signed PL 2024 C2 to law. And that's the amended act establishing a new framework for determining and enforcing municipalities' affordable housing obligations under the State's Fair Share Act and New Jersey Supreme Court Mount Laurel Doctrine. And whereas per the amended act, the municipality of Princeton, the municipality, adopted a binding resolution establishing its present and prospective need affordable housing obligation in accordance with the methodology and formula set forth in the amended act, and that's referring to resolution that's already been done. And that was done in January, whereas in accordance with municipality, in order for municipality to maintain immunity from inclusionary zoning litigation, it also filed a declaratory judgment action, a DJ action with a certain caption in order to participate in what is calling, as per the 2000, this 2024 formulation of a new process, the procedure established by the amended act. And to seek an order of compliance with the new law and the Mount Laurel Doctrine, and whereas the Supreme Court, Superior Court subsequently entered an order on March 25, 2025, entitled a certain order establishing the present obligation of municipality to be, present need obligation municipality to be 60 affordable units, and the prospective need obligation municipality to be 276 affordable units. And Elaine obviously talked about that. Whereas the municipality is now prepared a fourth round housing element fair share plan and appendices in accordance with the order and the amended act in considering, with considerable input, with planners, municipal staff and attorneys, and whereas a hearing to consider adoption of the HEFSP was duly noticed and held on June 25, 2025. And whereas the planning board has determined that the HEFSP is consistent consistent with the goals and objectives of the municipality's master plan, I don't think we need to say that. And that I would take out that phrase. Just in that adoption, implementation of the HS HEFSP are in the public interest and protect the public health and safety and promote the gender welfare, now therefore be resolved by the planning board of Princeton, that the planning board of Princeton has hereby adopted fourth round housing plan element and fair share plan in substantially the form of the draft dated June 13, 2025.
Okay. So we have a motion to adopt this element of the master plan and a second. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Well, thank you, everyone. I I could not be happier that every single person who testified tonight, and some with constructive comments and even constructive criticism, but all supported this plan, and I think that is really remarkable. I guess I'm stating the obvious, but it is so refreshing and you know, so to Council President Sacks and David Cohen and Michelle Perron Lambros, and of course, the mayor and all the council members who have done so much work on this, and Kevin Van Heist, and of course, Justin Lesko and Elaine Klisham.
And Michael Sullivan.
I am in awe of 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 your work and that this, you know, a lot of this plan is sort of a dense read. I was waiting through.
It's a dense write.
I don't mind saying.
It's a very dense write.
But but just very, you know, well, it's been said in many different ways tonight. There's a lot to like about this plan, so thank you.
And if I could just add one thing, I think it puts Princeton in a very positive path, in spite of the fact that Michael Sullivan has a black cat on his, on his lap that he's petting.
For our plan drafted Friday the 13th, Jerry?
Lucky 13. Well, yeah, I I don't have anything else to say. Mr. Cohen?
Despite the fact that I know that everybody had scheduled to be here until 11 tonight, I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, everybody, and thank you to members of the public who attended tonight and and care about this issue. It is, it's really important to the town, and we appreciate your your interest and commitment to these principles. All right.
Night, everybody.
See you next time. We have one meeting in July scheduled. See you then, if not before. Good night.
Good night.